Can everyone hear us, okay?
I can hear you just fine.
Dr. Hyman, did you want to do the welcome? If the mayor is unable to get to us at one, well, just note that she, uh, she was still, I think she may still be at Southern with the governor. She may be a little bit late.
Good afternoon, how are you?
I will be answering questions one through three in my book project. Leaders Eat Glass by Simon T. McEnroe. The first question is whether this is the author's major theme of thesis. Second question being, for what audience is the book intended? And the third question being, describe?
Councilwoman Freeman, are you, can you hear me? Are you ready? Ready to start? Okay. All right, so I am going to just do a welcome. I'm going to welcome you on behalf of our, as I always say, boots-on-the-ground mayor, May Elaine O'Neill, the subcommittee meeting members, myself, councilmember Hyman, and councilmember Friedman. We are welcoming you here to our second meeting of the Subcommittee for the Durham Association of Realtors. We are looking forward to our agenda today, and I'm going to pass it on to my councilmember, councilmember Freeman, and welcome everyone, and just thank you for your energy, I appreciate this, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You're kind of low, Freeman, you're kind of low.
You might have to scoot up a little bit. So, can you hear me now?
That's better.
So, just then sharing, based on our council meeting where we had a presentation and some speakers for, from the Durham Realtors Association, we felt like there needed to be a little bit more conversation and context around some of the questions they were posing, and some follow-up from staff and Durham Housing Authority. We propose to have these three meetings, and so this is the second of the three. The last one was on March, it was March 12th, and this one, and this one today, and the next one would be on May the 11th. May the 11th. Just trying to make sure that we're carrying through with the line of communication or line of conversation that was, began at that council meeting, and trying to answer some of those questions that were brought up. I do know that we were supposed to have the Durham Housing Authority on the call today, but unfortunately, Ms. DeMita, who is going to be presenting from Durham Housing Authority, had a death in the family, so due expert grace in that. She's gonna try to catch up with us on the third meeting, and so we'll hold that conversational space for her to follow up on the, on the Durham Housing Authority's affordable housing homeownership program. And today, we will have our moving from rental to homeownership conversation with property management, Linwood Cherry, acknowledging from the Subcommittee of the Durham Regional Association of Realtors. And we just have a little bit more time for discussion, and we'll probably have a fairly shorter meeting today. So if that works for everyone, I'm just looking for head nods, thumbs up, or head nods. Okay? And I'll give a little bit more, hold on, in our previous meeting. In our previous meeting, we had an extensive conversation with the Community Development Department around the affordable housing bond and the homeownership opportunities that were available, and we learned that a number of those opportunities did not follow, follow all the way through, and a lot of suggestions were offered on the next RFP that would be set up to make sure that we have an underwriter in place so that the homeownership opportunities could be met. I will also add, there were, there was a lot of feedback from residents and from Durham Association of Realtors, and our city attorney actually responded at about 12:56 today, so I'm gonna ask for someone in that office to just share a little bit of insight on what was shared in the email. I think Attorney Rayberg, or is it Fred? Or Aaron Miles.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Freeman, this is Kim Rayberg. Yes, I did send a short memorandum that was drafted by senior assistant city attorney Aaron Miles regarding the question that you all had about targeting down payment assistance to communities of color, so that memo just basically has this office's interpretation of the landscape of the law on that issue, and what we would recommend in terms of best practices. With that, if Aaron, it didn't look a minute ago like she was a panelist, and I don't know if she is now, but if she is, I would love to turn it over to her, and she can just give you a quick summary of her thoughts.
Hello, thank you for having me, I'm, I've now been added as a panelist, yes. So just to provide a little background information, the, the memo goes through an analysis of both the fair housing laws for the state, the federal government, as well as the city of Durham, where we have a non-discrimination ordinance in place that all three would prohibit discrimination on the basis of race. There's also a further legal analysis on rectifying past harm. Generally, that is referred to as reparations, and I provided some instances where it has occurred and what those parameters would be. The legal analysis goes through and identifies that the best way to move forward, what to focus on alternatives to a race-based consideration for housing would be using low-income-based considerations such as area median income, 60% or 30% AMI, or using geographical considerations, certain areas of Durham that city council sees as priorities for residents.
Thank you. And what I'll do is make sure that we do share out the memo that we'll share to the members on the call. But as much as we can, just trying to figure out how to share that with you all. Thank you very much. Attorney Robert Miles and Attorney River. I think we, and then I just want to make sure I do note that the mayor was held up. I know she had a meeting with the governor earlier this morning at Southern High School, and so I'm hoping that she'll be able to join us, but if she isn't, just know that she, she is working. But outside of that, I do want to keep us moving, and just appreciate that the conversation, that reparations, understanding reparations may not be possible from the state or from the landpeople, municipal level or the state level, and noting that the alternative focus has been, I think, a big, major part of our affordable housing bond, and just acknowledging that income and geographic, I think geographic location has been used. But if there are any suggestions the folks want to make around that, I think now would be the time to hear some of that. And if not, just continue, if you're thinking about it and have thoughts later, you can feel free to share that.
Um, I, I do have a question. This is Germany McNeil, and do you all know where the city is at with choosing an underwriter for the down payment assistance?
I will have to follow up with, um, no, they did not share any update thus far, so I'm assuming nothing has shifted, but I will, I will also follow back to this meeting with Reginald Johnson and Community Development to get, at least the date that they, they, they think that will occur.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we delve in a little deeper? I don't see any hands raised, and I don't see you.
I, I have, this is Linwood Cherry. I have to make a meeting at the courthouse at 2:00 PM, so I just wanted to make that note, if I leave the meeting, I apologize that I didn't want to miss my time in discussion, but.
Well, that's, that's a good segue into the next, next agenda item, which is specifically your presentation or your, your lead in the discussion around affordable, affordable housing and moving from rental to homeownership.
Okay, yeah, so, um, I can discuss that somewhat. What we're seeing right now is, in the years past, of course, we've, within, and I'm speaking specifically to my business as a, as a whole here in our experiences with, you know, hundreds of thousands of units and thousands of tenants over decades in Durham is, over the last year specifically, every tenant we've had, 100% that have gone from renting with Cherry Realty have purchased homes outside of Durham, North Carolina. And I would say, before that, the percentage was getting, you know, 90 to, to 95%, but we're seeing few and fewer over the last five years stay in Durham going from rentals to purchasing. And I think this is just from everything that we have discussed in past meetings and our presentation. It just kind of, I won't say nail in the coffin, but it just backs up everything that we're discussing with pricing and loans and the difficulty to purchase in Durham right now. And we're seeing people rent longer because especially three bedrooms or four bedrooms or larger homes for families, they are renting longer because the cost of that home, even though the rent is high, is less than they could purchase for within the city. More people are commuting to Durham if they do work in Durham. And I know that's also an issue of, of our discussion of getting more people that work for the city and employees to find housing within our community. It's seeming difficult as well. And I feel like a lot of this has possibly already been discussed, but the, on the rental side, it's, it's prevalent that it's difficult for, to go from renting to purchasing within Durham County and Durham City.
Um, we also have a. Sorry, this is council. And I know you, we've talked to this, but could you just do like three top-ish barriers to why this is happening, like three, just three.
Cost, cost and cost.
Yes.
There's, uh, well, and you have interest rates, of course, that are higher that is put, that, you know, has been said. Housing costs, interest rates, and honestly, availability. There's the, the inventory of homes for sale is low, and especially for affordable homes is low. And so, very similar to the process of buying in general, just going from rentals to purchasing. Most everyone rents before they buy, so. And the, the city has just changed, it's just that way.
Yeah, because what, what I'm seeing is, and I, you know, I'm a professor at Central, a lot of my students are trying to graduate and buy, but everybody's moving to Meven, and I don't know what's going on in Meven, but it seems like all of my students are moving to Meven, and I don't know if they're, I, I just don't know what's going on out there, so.
Yeah, of course, at Meven, Oxford, Creedmoor. We manage quite a bit in Butler area. And we manage actually quite a bit for Butler area for people that work for the city, actually, that rent, so. That aren't able to live in the city of Durham because of cost. And I, I don't foresee an answer to that right now.
And I would, I would like to add that, um, you know, the, in order for our residents to be able to purchase, many of them for first-time home buyers need to be able to utilize the programs that we currently have in place that are not operational at this time. So I think that plays a large part in being able to try to help those that have gotten to a point that they can purchase. And I've, I've had, you know, clients that have gone through the process and became discouraged because it was so difficult to try to get through the process and, um, you know, to, to, and I've had some that have lost money trying to use the process, so. It, it, they've lost faith, and, you know, they're moving to areas where the price point is lower than Durham.
And I was thinking along those same lines as Mr. Germany McNeil, that, that there's got to be some subsidy or some way that the programs actually are implemented in a way that gets more of the residents that are here to stay here, and so I, I mean, I know we're in budget season and we're in budget conversations. I want to, I want to, I want to ask Community Development to follow up on what their, I guess, new ideas look like, or the plans that look like coming out, you know, out of the affordable housing bond and beyond going forward. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, and, and also the Housing Authority, because they offered that homeownership program. And I, I guess my, my qualm is that these programs have worked before. They've worked before, we used them for years, the city of Durham offered down payment assistance before when they were doing the South Side revitalization. So the programs have worked before, so I know that, you know, it, it can work again. We just got to be proactive in restoring these programs.
And I do, I do have a note, because I checked in with DeMita, and prior to the conversation, and she was, well, the note was made, the note was shared, the program doesn't have staff, and so the staffing shortage is also a part of this, and that they are now facing 65% of their staff lost from last year, and they're working to rebuild from that, and so trying to make sure that people understand, like, we need, we need folks to do this work. And so, if they don't have staff and there's no one to turn over, that's at the Durham Housing Authority. If there's no one there to actually process folks through, this doesn't work, and so I'm interested in hearing how they're navigating that as well.
Councilman Freeman, can, can they utilize contract staff? Because Ms. McNeil and Mrs. Cherry, a lot of people who came, a lot of you who came to our meeting before, like, this is, I guess this is my frustration, because you keep saying what we need, and it's just kind of stable at this point. And so how do we move forward? What is the resolutions to move forward? Because they are telling us what the barriers are.
And I think in that, for the Housing Authority specifically, the question is not whether they can or can't, and who's going to fund it. And so if it's something that we as a city want to fund, I'm sure they can hire contract staff, but it would have to be something that came forward and was approved, so.
And I, I, and this is my opinion, I think part of the issue is that the jobs are not being publicized. They're saying that they're down 60 people, but if you go to the Durham Housing Authority website, there's only eight openings. So if somebody is looking to work at the Housing Authority and they're going to their website, they're not going to find the positions being listed as open, and I just think that there's a breakdown somewhere in getting it out there, that they, they need employees and that they need assistance.
And I would say that I would, I would probably, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I would assume that there's probably a breakdown in who's in HRD posts, and so if I don't have folks to keep it moving internally as well, that's still a shortage, that's the staffing shortage, and so that's what's happening.
Yeah, we, you know, we also need to somehow encourage developers to build affordable housing. That's what's happening in Meven, you know, they're building affordable housing there, and here, you know, the costs are so much more, and I don't know what we can do to incentivize the developers, but, you know, they can make more money if they build more expensive houses, and that's what's happening. I, I, I know that the estate is coming up with a, a bill that would help with that by limiting the amount of restrictions on developers if they agree to do it to low income and also workers, like teachers and firemen, things like that. But I, I don't know what the answer is, but that's why everybody's going to Meven.
I would love to see if Meven has anything different, and I don't know.
What are they doing, right, what are they doing out there? Because everyone.
Looking into something like that, if they notice Meven as a, if they're doing a different policy or a different law that they're working with to create that type of incentive.
Meven has been working on trying to incentivize housing production in their community for a number of years now, and they're really starting to see the fruits of it. You know, some of the things that they do is, whereas it takes us maybe 10 to 16 weeks to get a water meter in Durham set, they're setting them the same day, they're turning building permits in 24 to 48 hours. They're not charging impact fees, they're not, they're not requiring the, the same things that Durham requires in terms of building streets, the way streets are built, the way stormwater control measures are reviewed and improved and inspected and constructed. So there's a whole plethora of things that, that they implemented a number of years ago that have really given them an advantage over us as we've constrained our supply during the same period of time.
I will push back a little bit on that because Meven will have to be on the hook on the backside of that tax dollars to cover the, the kind of stormwater infrastructure that we, we have in place based on what we put, push forward. I will say that if there is a way for our attorneys to look at limit or doing that kind of low-income housing, you know, water metering in 24 hours or building permit in 24 hours or, you know, doing the way with impact fees based on specific criteria that, that will create affordable housing, that, that would probably be helpful.
Indeed, and also, I mean, just for point of fairness, I don't think that Alamance County gets treated the same way in the eyes of the state as Durham County does when it comes to stormwater. Stormwater is certainly a part of it, it's, it's not all of it, it's, it's the time and the money it takes to turn raw land into housing is, is the bottom line, and, and so that can be, and when I mentioned stormwater, I, I, and a lot of this, again, is on the county side as opposed to the city side, but it has to do with review timelines and acceptance timelines and, and fees associated with the, with that. And then on, more on the city side, the, it has to do with some of the construction standards that we have in Durham for infrastructure that nobody, none of our surrounding communities have. When we're putting 16 inches of stone under a small neighborhood street, when DOT requires eight inches on a highway, there's an obvious disparity in the expense there.
And I think these are, these are all questions we can take back. I can definitely share with Community Development, City, with our city manager, and, and we have the office of, of the city attorney on the line already, so. Definitely work to make sure that they, they kind of give us some more feedback around how we might be able to hear some of what's happened in Alamance without transferring all of the costs to taxpayers, because that part is a pushback on all time. I think that when the developer is developing, we have to try and get as much infrastructure in place as we can.
Or is there an overhaul on the budget so it doesn't affect taxpayers? What, what's happening on the end of the city with that?
When you say overhaul in the budget, say that again, a different way.
Well, I guess, like, we have, you know, we need hiring to implement the funding such as Germany is, is speaking towards, and, you know, so where with all these, and then there's also functions within the city that just aren't functioning properly or, or fast enough to allow for housing, I mean, to even allow for a, a simple deck to go in the back of a house that takes three months, or, you know, there's these things that are just holding us up, so. I think a lot of it might just, instead of asking for more money from the taxpayers, what's the city doing to budget with the money we already have, since taxes have increased over time anyways, and we're one of the most expensive tax bases is for property in the state, so. I think it's an easy solution to say, put it towards. So um I think it's an easy solution to say, put it towards a taxpayer. But, but what's the, what's the city doing to budget better to get the employees we need? Um, you know, and I think a timeline needs to be put on that. And, and get to work.
I, I would um, just based on the last part first. The city manager is working on the budget now and they'll be presenting that in the coming weeks. Um I would say that, but if you're referring to what I'm talking about as far as transferring to the taxpayers, infrastructure is not a one-time thing. It's ongoing. And so the sixteen inches of stone may prevent us from having to come back and do the road twelve times. Um, you know, twelve versus two, if we're doing two million per yard, like, that, those numbers, they add up fairly quickly. And looking at the different types, different types of contracts that come in on for council, the millions and millions of dollars are towards more infrastructure. And so whether it's water or sewer or um the things you don't see, um those things don't, they don't transfer to anyone else but the property owner. And so that, that becomes taxpayer in that way. And so I'm not saying like the hiring or like some specific program that would come forward that would transfer to a taxpayer. There's plenty of funds um in the budget that are geared towards programs every year, different, different programs every year. And I think for us as a city, we've been pushing our, or say to the council, we've been pushing our staff to figure out what that looks like. Um and that's what our budget hearings essentially are, is hearing back from them what they're working on. And once the mayor, um, once the city manager puts together the budget and presents it in June, um that's, that's where we go forward, or I should say May and then June. So I don't think it'll be um limited. I think you will see programs. I think you will see uh supports that look like um a contractor or uh the underwriting, like, all of that's gonna happen with the dollars we already have. But we also have to count for, so when we compare to Alamance, I don't know what Alamance spend on an annual basis on their roads. I don't know what they spend on stormwater. I just know what we doing there. I hope that helps.
It, it does. Uh looking forward to seeing the budget.
I, I am as well.
Uh, uh, Councilman Freeman, there is a interesting statement in the chat. I wanted you to see that and maybe make that announcement. I'm Stephen Kill.
Uh, I hope all of you thought this was live. Hope all of you saw the study that's sent through from the Urban Land, Urban Institute, that zoning changes do not lead to more affordable housing being built. Fifty cities, fifty cities studied over ten years. It does lead to more housing being built, but not primarily, primarily tied to our needs. Yes.
Yeah.
And Mr. Neal, I believe you've promoted, if you wanted to speak to your comment in the chat. Get on mute. There you go.
I'm sorry, I was mostly here to listen. I think I sent pretty much everybody, although I think Mr. Cherry may have not gotten it. Um, it's a fascinating study on um the effects of zoning um in terms of building new affordable housing. And I'm not talking even about the AMI type of housing, I'm just talking about making housing more affordable. And that seems to be the, the biggest challenge that Durham has right now, obviously, as.
You know, uh, I'm with the Lee's Road Coalition. We've got ten thousand new homes coming here in southeast Durham, but none of them are affordable. I mean, they're gonna start at uh, well, at least three fifty for the townhouses. And probably by the time they're built in two, in three years, those will be close to four hundred thousand dollars. I'm also a Realtor, so I kind of know what I talk about here, along with, you know, Mr. Cherry and um Mr. Look Knight. But, but it's, it seems that, you know, so much of what's being done is antithetical to what Durham needs and what Durham has asked it to have done. I'm, I'm very, uh, I was very encouraged by Mr. Look Knight's uh comments about uh the entitlements and how can we cut those back a little bit um in terms of uh cutting costs. But there's really only two ways you're gonna get, you're gonna get um housing prices to come down. One is either by doing that or by um, you know, city, um, city and county, um, you know, putting money into it. Um, you know, we have, I've, I've heard that we have some programs for first-time buyers that allegedly they can get twenty thousand dollars, but it's not funded by anybody. Uh Raleigh has one for fifty thousand. I think another city just raised theirs as well. So, I mean, there's a number of ways to do it, but I don't really see that it's gonna happen from the majority of developers because the costs are just too high. Um, I, I kind of did a little bit of an analysis here, again, using this Mr. Look Knight's number of one hundred fifty dollars per square foot for a base house, not including land or entitlements to, and I know this isn't about the subject, uh, to one of the SCAD proposals, which was to raise the size of ADUs from eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet. Um, using his number, that would be an increase of sixty thousand dollars per ADU. Which really, you know, if we're trying to use that, that um, um, you know, text amendment and anything else, raising prices is not going to help us find more affordable housing. So it seems to me that, that there's a, there's a tremendous amount to do and um i- in many different directions. But I think some of it's gonna come from, um, you know, other cities invest in, in housing. Durham generally does not. Um, so it seems to me that to do that, you're gonna have to act more like other cities and, and find ways to do that or invest in, in people that need the housing. And I know there's some laws about that, um, but frankly, it's the only way it's really gonna happen other than just getting, you know, more four hundred thousand dollar townhomes built. Sorry if I was on my soapbox.
But you're right.
I, I do capture the part of the investing in housing or investing in the people that need the housing. And I think that that's kind of where we are, trying to figure out. Um, to Ms. McNeil's point, um, there's that investment in the people, which is the house, the home, or, or the down payment assistance. And then to Mr. Look Knight, it's the investing in housing and trying to figure out how to cut back the cost or even just doing subsidies that are affordable.
Sorry, go ahead, sir. No, I just wanted to say, one, just one other quick uh study, and I'm sorry I was late. I thought this was a live meeting, so I went to City Hall, just drove back. Um, I, I wanted to make one other, one other comment about infrastructure. Um, you know, a lot of the cities that are used as models for um, for this type of work, um, you can take, say, DC or Atlanta, here, those cities used all the time, you know, have tremendous public transportation infrastructure. They have train systems, they have subways, they have robust bus systems. And quite frankly, until Durham gets some of that, um, you know, building the way that we're building right now and, and assuming that people are going to stop just driving their cars one night magically, is never gonna work. So we, we have to have some sort of collaboration between all the areas, transportation, infrastructure, um, housing, et cetera, to see how, how, you know, Durham moves forward. And I think that is, you know, um, again, since the, it's on the table, the fifty-four-page SCAD amendment ma- doesn't mention the word transportation. And it, it's, it's, it, it's the, the, the bedrock of, of how you can actually make it a city work. And it seems like we're, it's being either ignored or just certainly not being funded. So um, I, I, we guys, you guys have got a lot of work to do and I commend you all for taking this on. Um, and I, you know, I, I, I agree with a lot of, of what was said in the first meeting, and I don't know if there was another meeting, I'm sorry I missed it. But, but there, but there's a lot to do and it's gonna require a lot of, a lot of support from a lot of places. It's, it's a really big job.
And I think Charlotte would be a good, a good place to look at what they're doing because they've got some pretty extensive affordable housing um projects in place. Um, and they also offer homeownership, just as Durham County does, through the Housing Authority. And their program is a lot more robust than the one in Durham. Um, before I closed my client last year, I don't think anyone had closed using a homeownership program in, in two, three years, so.
And, and that's helpful cuz I do know that the Durham Housing Authority did have, I think it's like three, maybe four years back, they had a whole tour scheduled for elected to see what Charlotte had been doing and that was what was modeling, where we got the wrap around um the county buildings, the county parking lots to make affordable housing available. And then uh similarly, I think uh, I'm, I'm gonna miss out the name. But it's the, it's the senior housing that, that's down by, down below one forty-seven.
A.J. Henderson.
Not, not J.J. Henderson. It's a little further. The one says, it's something, it might be Forest Hills. Um apartments or something like that. But there, that project is, and I think is, we've been a benefit of seeing what they were doing in Charlotte in a way that they're talking about doing affordable housing, rental and also homeownership opportunities. Uh, I'm not sure if J.J. Henderson got to homeownership, but I think they did, they, I mean, I think the joint is trying to do more rental or create more rental, but, you know, the, the homeownership opportunities aren't, aren't as present.
I wa- I wanna ask a question, and I don't know if this is still, but back in the day, when we were in New York, they had a lot of programs that were rent-to-own. Is any of that going on in Durham? Is that something that you all think is not a good program? But I, I remember that many years ago, like rent-to-own, that you can, and then you can take some of that rent and kind of put it down. It used to be put it down on uh down payments, just asking.
Unfortunately, there's been a lot of bad players in that space in our history. And so uh, from my, from my professional opinion, I would, I would recommend it to my clients to, to avoid that, find other ways to save the money they need or participate in a, in a city down payment uh assistance program or, or something like that. There are too many people that wind up stealing people's money.
But um, we, I have participated in something, not along those lines, but where I have tenants that rent the house and then I help them to prepare for homeownership and then help them to present an offer to the owner to purchase the rental home and having the owner take into consideration the amount that, of time that they've lived there and paid rent. Um, I guess it's more of a, um, a lease with the option to purchase would be more along those lines rather than a rent-to-own type deal. Oh, and I was just gonna say, um, there, there was a project that D.R. Horton was building over off of the New Blaine in northern Durham called Trevino Towns. Um, and these were our townhouses. They're currently building them now. They're supposed to be rental properties. Um, cuz D.R. Horton has a residential side called DHI. And they have been building these townhomes and we have renters that were waiting to go into these townhomes. And now they switched it and said they're just gonna sell the units. They're not gonna rent them out. Um, I just found it interesting that they got their plans and permitting and all of that passed under the guise that it was gonna be rental housing and how easy it was for them to say, well, no, we're not gonna rent it, we're gonna sell them. And they're, they're gonna start in the three hundred thousands.
Usually.
And Freeman, again, that's, this is new to me. So is that something that we need to look into that? But is that something that?
Look into it, but I would say that I, I do believe that they started as a sale project. It was for sale. And then they switched to rental in COVID and they are switching back customers to me. But um I will be checking out, um, checking in to see what's going on, but that, they did, they were a purchase at first.
Thank you.
And I was gonna add to that rent-to-own model. I think there was, there's also been, I've heard feedback from folks in the community about um programs that have come to fruition and not, not just money stolen, but just money just not being allocated to the right person and a lot of mismanagement. And so people lost money thinking that they had this amount and they didn't. And, you know, trying to move forward and it didn't work. Yeah, so it's, it's been a little messy. We can figure out what a program might look like for the city to do. Um, a down payment assistance program outside of just a second, like a second mortgage, but where you're allowing folks to do a savings. I know we used to have a credit, you know, and for some reason it's closed. I'm not sure what happened. I'm not sure what, how that happened, but it's not any, any longer uh city of Durham's credit union.
Well, there were some programs, a program previously called IDA, where if they saved up a certain amount of money, they would get their money matched or they would receive additional money to supplement the money that was saved. And also, um, Durham Housing Authority, they have a program called FSS Family Self-Sufficiency. And in the past, um, for um, their voucher holders that enrolled in the program, they had it set up where as they received rent increases, they would take that additional money and put it into an escrow account for them. And I've seen those clients be able to save up over five years thousands of dollars that helped them to be able to, to purchase. Um, they have to set goals and they can't utilize the money unless they reach their goals. And um I think that if, if we could get that back going at the Housing Authority, but it also would be nice for the city to look into cuz it, it may help in brainstorming what kind of programs the city can put in place to assist those that need the help in homeownership.
And, and I don't know, is there any way to kind of get me and us a list of some of the things that you know that other cities are doing in terms of these programs? Just like a, like you said, Charlotte is big on it. Just so that this, I, I can look at them and we can then start to ask our colleagues to, like, cuz this, if other cities are doing it, you know, I know Durham is different, but we need to do something cuz this is, it's just very frustrating that we have programs in surrounding big places like Durham that are doing these things. And then we've got people that can't stay here, but they're moving to other places. And that's just very frustrating. So if I, if we can just get a list, I mean, I know that you're saying Charlotte, but if you have any ideas of a list of these programs that other cities are doing, that we can look, okay, this is the program, this is what they're doing, and we can kind of talk to it or kind of investigate it. That would be helpful for me, I know.
I would be willing to um, to work on that and putting a list together to pass along.
Thank you. Cuz then we can, you know, maybe do a, a, a visit or, you know, just go and see whatever. Cuz, yeah, if people, other people are doing this, we, we have to try to be innovative and creative in how we can bring it to Durham. Sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just gonna say, you may have some of this resource already. I know that Nate Baker and I think David Morgan on the, on the Planning Commission have a, a fair amount of this information as far as what other cities are doing. So you may want to ask them for what they have. Not, not saying that Ms. McNeil can't, can't go, go do some more digging yourself, but you may have some stuff that they already have. So they might be a good place to go to start asking, and maybe some other people in the Planning Commission too, who are, who are planners by trade. They may, they may know what's being done in other places, especially in fifteen-minute neighborhoods and a number of the other things that are.
And I, and I know Baker, Baker has given us, he, he has given us, I know I've met with him and he's given us some really good ideas. Um, and then sometimes those are dears, bring it to someplace south and it's like, oh, we really can't do that here in Durham. So my thing is like, I just need to know what these different, yeah, what these barriers are. Cuz I, he does give, I know I've met with him and I know he get, has really good ideas. But again, then we'll bring it to another, another, and it's like, oh, we really can't do that here or blah, blah, blah. So I will continue to, to speak with them. Thank you for that. But.
I think he has data as well, rather than just ideas, I mean, or information about what's actually happening in other cities. That may help some. You know, one thing you haven't talked, at least I heard you talk about is uh Durham, like many other cities, has a pretty big influx of investors buying up homes. Um, I think last year it was fifteen, almost twenty percent of the uh retail, real estate sales were to investors. And certainly in areas of, of more the vulnerable neighborhoods, they're buying them up, fixing them up and turning them into rentals. So you're getting hurt a lot on, you know, on, uh, you know, generational wealth from this happening. Um, you see it in a lot of places, you drive through different neighborhoods and you'll know the house that's third, that's the uh, that's become the rental because they've done a lot of work to it. And then, of course, they jack up the prices. That doesn't help either. Um, that's something we, with the INC, we talk about that quite a bit, as to how we can help those folks and what might be able to be done. But um, again, you have, they have a lot of, a lot of challenges. But, um, again, you have, they have a lot of, a lot of challenges, a lot of challenges. I mean, it's, it's hard for people to buy homes with the interest rates at this point. There's not a lot for sale, the, the inventory is really low, especially in the lower priced, um, uh, numbers, anything under three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand. I was looking for a client today and, and, um, one of the rallies, so, uh, two seven six one six, there were actually two homes for sale. And one, I wouldn't even take the client into, it's such a disaster. So I'm sure Durham is exactly the same. Um, two homes in, in an entire zip code under three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
That, that is, um, mainly the reason we started the Housing Deep Dive. And I will say for the, if you missed the first meeting, it is recorded.
Well, I, I went to the first meeting, that was the one, that was on, in the, um, in the chambers, right?
No, no, it was, uh, it was a Zoom for the Subcommittee. We went through different presentations that we've had, and, uh, John Colleen actually did Who Owns Durham? And shared all.
Oh, I know that one, I've seen that presentation.
Around that in October, in our, in our October work session. And, um, it definitely was helpful to see that with that ownership shift away from individuals, uh, who are local, that it's definitely gonna have an impact, uh, long term. And I would add to that, it's, it's all, all, as a property owner, uh, it probably less, because you're, there's so much angst in the market. It's, it's, it's like kind of built on itself that you're not even putting your home on the market. So you'd rather just rent it out than put it on the market, so, yeah. Definitely, I'm just looking through, trying to see, uh, because those presentations, um, from October was Who Owns Durham, and November is the Legal Framework for Affordable Housing Planning and Planning and Development, uh, January, the homeless, the homelessness system of care. Uh, February, we did, uh, Legal Aid and the, and the Down Payment Assistance Program. We have, uh, ABU programs, staffing, teacher development, and then in March, the Water Policy Impacts, um, specifically around Lake Creek.
Right.
So I think as we continue forward, uh, I'm not sure that the, what the next Housing Deep Dive conversation will be, uh, presentation will be. But, uh, this Durham Realty Association highlighted a number of the concerns with uh, programs that were already in place at this, at this McNeil, stated a number of times, both the city and with their housing authorities. And so we did want to create a space to kind of create a feedback loop so that we can, uh, nail down a solution that actually does address those two programs. And then if we can come up with new, you know, new programs, or if there are resources like you just shared, uh, whether it's, uh, through commissioners or planners by their trade. I mean, it's, it's important that we keep this at the forefront, so that we're not thinking that there's no way to solve the problem. Tend to think it's not solvable, but it is. So, um, I'm checking around if there's any, anything else anyone else wanted to share before we wrap up.
I just, in our last meeting, if we could come up with just tangible, like, three or four things that we need to follow up on. Um, I'm just very solution focused, I think the conversation is good, but like, like especially these programs, the Underwriter, we've heard that ten thousand times, like, what is going on? So we have those tangible things that we're following up on. Because I think the conversation is good, but where are we gonna go next?
I think for, for me on my list, I will say the RFP for, for, um, the Underwriter, getting a timeline and a date, like I said when I first speak. Um, so, development is one thing, and then following up on the Trevino Homes, the Trevino Town Homes, because that's interesting, if they switch back to purchase rather than rental. And then I have, um, the, we need to get staff and put around, uh, subsidizing housing costs, interest rates, um, to create more inventory of affordable housing and I've had.
And I think, I think, I also talked about, like, the city and county, like, investing in funds or programs or whatever, or getting these programs up to speed that are out there already, but they're just not working functionally. Which to me is frustrating. And I know I keep using the word frustrating, but when I talk to people in the community, like, people want to become homeowners. You know, even if it's a family that's got six or seven people putting resources together, because that's what's happening today in age. You gotta bull, you gotta buy with a whole family, they want to do that. But they can't do that if these programs, and I remember being a first homeowner many years ago in New York, those programs I went through. I remember having, coming out of college and having a crazy high interest rate, because you know, you messed up your, your stuff in college. But it was these, you know, first-time home buyers, you know, you could then get your, um, your loan through a broker, I remember it was a crazy, like, I used to call it a mafia rate, like a eighty percent rate, but it, it got me in the house. And I was, it fixed me up and then I refinanced, but those were programs. Where are those programs? And I know Ms. uh, McNeil keeps talking about it and all of you, and I just want to know what are the, like, how do we, how do we knock down these barriers to the programs that we already supposed to have, you know, to be able to help people?
And then just the one, the one last thing I'm noting is the resources from, um, Germany, Baker and Morgan and our surrounding city kind of.
What they're doing, mhm.
And one thing I would like to add, um, on the outskirts, skirts of the city of Durham and, and Durham County, like Bahama, Rougemont, those areas are still considered to be, um, part of rural development. And, uh, USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, they have two programs that they offer. One of them is a hundred percent financing, and the other one is actually a payment subsidy that will help pay a person's mortgage for up to thirty-three years, um, of the loan. And that is a program that previously in Meban, um, previously, most of Meban was considered to be USDA, and a lot of people were able to purchase using that program. And I think that, you know, residents would be able to utilize it, there just isn't a lot of housing out in that area. There isn't a lot being built. And, um, I think that that should be explored, because that Bahama, Rougemont area, if you pull up the USDA, um, property eligibility map, it shows that those areas would still be able to fall under those guidelines. And they work with low income and very low income, um, price point. So I think that's something that, that could be viable to build some affordable neighborhoods in the county, that aren't in the city, the taxes would be less, because they're not having to pay the city taxes. Um, and it, it could actually work with building some housing out there. Now, I, I agree with Stephen that, uh, we don't have the infrastructure for transportation. So if we put them out, if people move out that way, they're gonna have to have a car. Because I, currently our public transportation does not run out that way. Um, but I think that that should be included in what we're trying to figure out with affordable housing, because transportation as supportive services plays a very important part when we're trying to help those that, that are low income. The supportive services have to be there, or it, it, it leads to failure without the supportive services, so.
And I would add to that, I think that some of what I've noticed, so when you look up the zip codes of Bahama and those areas, there's nothing for sale. And we're seeing a lot of the same thing, where the investors have purchased a lot of that land and it's sitting on it. And so it, it, it's gonna take a real, like, coordinated effort to really try to figure out how to do, um, and, and I try to say this, housing that is affordable, um, for the folks who are, are at least able to afford it, so.
And if, if there was a way, I mean, if it is investors, if it's developers that have purchased this land, if there is a way that when they get ready to get permits, when they're trying to get through planning, if we can make some type of stipulations that they have to meet, even if there's a requirement that a portion of their development offers affordable housing. I think that, um, we have the authority to be able to do that.
You actually don't.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on, um, with our attorney Miles to address that, because I do know that that's been raised a number of times.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tag Team Donna, um, CNN Deputy City Attorney Donna, who he happens to be here and has answered that question previously. I'm just gonna turn off my blur here, and he, I'll let him answer that particular question.
Hey, everyone, it's Dawn. I had a hard time signing into the meeting, so Erin let me sit in with her. Um, Ms. McNeil, to answer your question, the city can't require that developers include affordable housing in their developments. However, developers can proffer that. The other thing, uh, and you mentioned this in your comments, those areas, Bahama and Rougemont are out in the county. So those would be the county jurisdiction. And just as a reminder, there isn't city, uh, there isn't water and sewer out there, so any development out there would need to be on wells and septic. And generally, that requires larger lots and frequently what, what follows is larger lots, larger houses. So just wanna, um, add that as far as development that far out in the county.
And I would track back to that infrastructure conversation that I mentioned earlier, and making sure that you kind of tie in where the development is going and that infrastructure is being put in place as well. So since that cost is not transferred to everybody else in the city. Um, there is, yeah. And I, I will say that many developers make proffers, they're often not enough. Or, uh, that, that would be my individual op- opinion. Um, they're often not, first, they're not a derivative based on what they're actually developing. And so it's hard for me to see, um, without having legal standing to push for that. It's just been difficult to really get more than, you know, three lots, four lots, five lots, um, proffered at a time for development.
Three percent of four hundred and something townhomes, it's like, you know.
Yeah, yeah, so I really appreciate everyone taking their time today to be with us, and I think this, you know, you have your hand up.
I'm sorry, I just, I just wanted to ask, um, again, you know, and then thank you for sharing the subject matter of all the last meetings you've had. I wonder if you would consider a subject matter for a future meeting, which is to do a deep dive into the Community Development Department's report on what they're doing with the affordable housing money. Um, we, correct me if I'm wrong, we had ninety-five million dollar bond in twenty nineteen, we've got another sixty-five million dollars in the federal government, and at least to my read, and I could be wrong of their latest report, we haven't built one home. And to, if this was, also say this clearly, if this was the private sector, they would all be fired.
Yeah, I, I think that they are scheduled to do, uh, uh, actual, um, Affordable Housing Bond Report in April at a work session. And so we can probably loop that into the May meeting for updates if folks want to have, you know, chime in there. But, uh, I know that that meeting's coming up, so I fully expect to hear what the numbers are, you may have gotten a preview that I did not, because I have not attended their Subcommittee meeting. But, um, this year, um, but I, I, I do know that they're supposed, there's like quarterly reports that they are doing, so if no houses have been built, that is, that's, no units have been built, that's definitely disappointing, but I, I, I know that the dollars, the contracts for the housing have started to roll, and I will say that, um, at the Joint City County Meeting Tuesday, the mayor made a point of noting that with the plan that we have in place right now, we've approved to do four additional affordable housing, um, projects that weren't, wouldn't have initially been fit into our initial fund that was available, and so and are shovel ready, and the county is also looking at, I think they, they may have voted, they may be voting at their upcoming meeting to support that. And so we would both be putting ten million dollars forward for twenty million dollars to cover those four additional projects. And I want to say that there are here street, um, Vandy Ridge, uh, there's, there's two more, I can't figure them right now, but, uh, but they're all BMW, the BMW on Oxford Road, and then one more. And Durham Tech. And so if those four projects were to come forward, that would be four hundred, four hundred units of affordable rental housing that would be made available.
Yeah, and there's only plans to do four hundred affordable houses of, for homeownership opportunities out of all that money, there's, they, in the plans, they plant for four hundred homes for affordable housing, which is.
Yeah. But yes, so I, I, again, I really appreciate everyone being on the call today and, and continuing the conversation.
Thank you.
Before the next meeting, um, uh, sending, uh, you know, grace and, and mercy prayers for, uh, to meet her and her family if they have lost. And hopefully they'll be here for the next few days, um, to cover that, that Housing Authority program. So we can figure out if we can work some things out in there as well, just similar to how we did with, uh, Community Development. So, uh, other than that, I, I have my list of tangible items to follow up on, the timeline for the, uh, Underwriter RFP, Trevino Town Home, uh, possible subsidy, investing funds in the programs or contracts, and resources and surrounding city policies, um, that will be pulled together. And then transportation infrastructure is the other thing that I added, so just acknowledging that I think, uh, we are in the prime position with the funding that has been made available with Transportation Infrastructure Act to, to actually get some bus rapid transit in place, where we're not just doing north and south, east and west, but actually doing some tangential pieces to that, so that there's hubs in other areas like North Carolina, South Carolina. So that's, that's my individual thought. I'm not talking with my colleagues and council about it, but, but I have some thoughts there, I have some ideas. And, um, I appreciate you all again, and I thank you. We will, we will join again on May the eleventh at one P M, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.